Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Babylon Planning Board. Today is April 29th. We have a public hearing regarding a minor subdivision. But before we start, could we begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance? Jerry?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Testing, one, two, testing.
I don't know what fixed it. Patrick Halpin.
President.
Frank Santos.
President.
Julianne Nolan.
President.
Jerry O'Neal.
President.
Dan Truchan.
President.
Ed Wynn.
President.
Juan Leon.
President.
Rich Casey.
President.
Greg Gaxiola.
President.
Matt Esposito.
Okay, we have a quorum. Before we start the public hearing, let me read this into the record. The planning board shall have the right to rely on any information that is presented by the applicant. If any such information is later found to be inaccurate or incorrect, the planning board may determine that any proposals, building permits, or other actions previously granted in connection with the application are null and void.
Item A on the agenda, public hearing minus subdivision, job number 23-24B. Timothy Porter and Michael Nomicos proposes to subdivide two parcels of land totaling 12,000 square feet into two 6,000 square foot lots in order to erect a new two-story single-family dwelling on lot number one and to legally maintain the existing single-family dwelling on lot number two.
Okay, who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Nicole Blanda. I'm an attorney at Bizel, Blanda, and Visconti with offices at 535 Broad Hollow Road in Melville.
Please proceed.
We've reviewed the planning department's memo to the board, and we want to say on the record that we do consent to all of the covenants and restrictions that have been requested, including but not limited to, single-family dwelling, owner occupied use, and no accessory apartments. On lot one, we consent to all 14 covenants, and on lot two, for the existing dwelling, we consent to the nine covenants that have been requested.
Okay. What's the nature of the relief you got to be looking for from the zoning board?
So, we were approved by the zoning board back in February for variances for this two-lot subdivision, which I can get into.
Apartment?
Which I'll get into.
Okay, fine.
Okay. So, I'm here tonight on behalf of the owner, seeking this two-lot subdivision. The premises is on the north side of Sheffield Avenue, east of Belmont Avenue. It does consist of two tax lots, 66 and 67. One is an 80 by 100, the other is a 40 by 100, and there are two street addresses here, 205 Sheffield and 207 Sheffield. In total, it has a lot area of 12,000 square feet, and it is zoned Residence C. It's presently improved with an existing dwelling that's located entirely on tax lot 66. There's also a frame garage that is proposed to be removed, along with an older driveway that is also proposed to be removed. The applicant is seeking to reconfigure the tax lot lines here and create this two-lot subdivision. So, lot one would be a 60 by 100-foot parcel with a lot area of 6,000 square feet, and we were granted two variances from the zoning board back in February for that lot, reducing the width from 75 feet to 60, and the lot area from 7,500 square feet to 6,000 square feet. For that new home, the applicant took care to not need any setback variances. So, in other words, they are proposing a dwelling that fit that size lot in terms of side yard setback, front yard, and rear yard setback. They also met the height requirement on that lot. That new dwelling is proposed to have an internal garage, driveway, and also four bedrooms, two and a half baths, with a porch. The existing frame garage in the rear of this property, again, would be removed. And lot two, we received variances for, again, a 60 by 100-foot parcel with a lot area of 6,000 square feet. Those variances were granted simultaneously back in February, and then there were some existing conditions on that dwelling that were legalized at that time.
What were those?
The front yard setback for the...
Excuse me, what were those conditions that were legalized?
That's what I'm saying right now.
Okay.
Sorry, the front yard setback on that existing...
By the way, I apologize for interrupting you.
That's okay. So, on the existing dwelling, there was a front yard setback that had to be legalized. It was existing at 28 feet 5 inches, where 30 feet were required. The rear yard was at 25 feet, where 30 feet are required. That was a small little bump out you could see in the rear of the home that generated that variance, but again, that was an existing condition. And the individual side yards complied, but we needed a total side yard variance from 25 to 23 feet 2 inches. So, that was created by the subdivision. That house has been there since 1931, and it was recently redone and renovated. The block on Sheffield between Belmont and Laramie is a mixed block in terms of different sized lots. Immediately to the west is a lot that, at one point, had a deli business on it. I'm not sure currently if they have an application pending or what alterations have been proposed, but it is a commercial lot. Immediately to the east is a 40-foot lot that's connected to a home that fronts on Lexington. There's only a shed on that lot, and it's right next to the existing dwelling. So, you know, again, existing conditions. Across Sheffield to the south is a 60 by 100-foot lot. That's tax lot 94. And next door to that is a 40 by 100-foot lot with a dwelling on it. You know, a 40 footer is quite uncommon. That's on tax lot 93. So, you can see that there's different sized homes. On the southeast corner of Sheffield and Belmont is a 40 by 96-foot parcel developed with a home. That's tax lot 90. And then as we head east on Sheffield, we have five 50 footers between Laramie and Lenox. To the west on Sheffield, there are mixed sizes with a couple of 50 footers. So, you know, similar to what we had presented to the zoning board, we had felt that it was compatible with the surrounding area and that it didn't cause any negative effect for the surrounding area as well. And again, in February, they did grant the variance relief. So, we had some, you know, departmental comments. We've addressed them. There was a revision requested very recently last week. The surveyor had the wrong dimension on the front of the home. We have since corrected that, and we've submitted revised surveys showing that, as well as there's no longer a roof over the oil tank that's on the side of the existing dwelling. That doesn't exist anymore. For some reason, the surveyor put it back on, but we also have a photo showing that that's gone. So, minor revisions were requested recently. We did resubmit. We do believe that the new house will be attractive. It's an open floor plan, you know, nice style home for, you know, a new family to come into the neighborhood. And, you know, again, we consent to all the covenants, single-family, owner occupied, no accessory apartments.
Do any of the board members have any questions? We did receive a letter from one of the neighbors opposed to this application. But one of the things that caught my attention was that they said there have been commercial trailers and shipping containers on the front lawn. Is this the right, is this the same, is this, no, that's about, yeah, 224 Belmont? Is that what this is, 224 Belmont?
No, this isn't 224 Belmont. This is a...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's where these people live. Oh, it's regarding this applicant, yeah. Why would they have trailers on the front yard like that?
I don't know. I'd have to ask. I don't...
Are they here?
No, the owners aren't here with me tonight.
The owners aren't here?
No, he's an agent for the owner, but...
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I'd have to look into that.
Well, anyway, their point is they weren't real particularly good neighbors.
Yeah. No, trailers shouldn't be there.
After they bought this property. I just wanted to make sure that was part of the record.
Okay.
This is a letter that will be part of the record. Okay. Any other questions? Any board members have? No? Okay, thank you. The conditions, the CNRs, they must be owner occupied, correct?
Yes.
Single-family only, correct?
Yes.
No accessory apartments ever?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure you understood that. Dan?
When was the, you said that the house that's currently there was upgraded? When was that remodeled?
Within the last couple of years, yeah.
So, where did they put the trailers? Somebody's living there. Was somebody living there?
In the trailer?
No, no.
Not that I'm aware of.
No, I'm talking about the trailers on the adjacent property.
It's some type of storage container. It will be removed.
It's still there, though.
It will be removed. Apparently, it's there, so it will be removed.
That would be nice. The neighbors, I'm sure, would appreciate that. Any other questions? No? Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board regarding this application?
Hi.
Please state your name and address for the...
Carol Cohn, 198 Sheffield Avenue, West Babylon.
Okay, we have that. Carol, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Okay. When you ask for a favor from someone, your friend, your family, the town of Babylon, you better have your things in order. You better be on your best behavior. That's not the case with this property. Okay. There has been a shipping container on this property for two years. Let me bring to your attention the fact that this violates town law in a number of ways, not just one. Okay? For some reason, they have a shipping container, by the way, the size of a Long Island Railroad car. A Long Island Railroad train car, in front of my face. Now, I have pictures of it. If you look here, there is a large rectangular gray object. Here is another large rectangular gray object. This is a close-up. Now, Babylon town law, strangely enough, does not allow you to put a shipping container, which this is, on a lawn. It's illegal. I assumed as a resident that so, I don't like to complain about people or get into fights with people, I really don't. And the fact is, I thought someone would drive by from the town, see this humongous shipping container, and say, wow, we don't allow that on front lawns because it really destroys the value of the neighborhood. Now, another interesting thing I found out today from the town of Babylon, you're not allowed to have pods or shipping containers for more than six months. And the most interesting part, you're supposed to have it in the driveway with a permit. But when I called the town of Babylon, no one could find a permit. So, what's this all about? Am I complaining because there's been a shipping container there for two weeks, or three weeks, or a couple months? No. This has been here nearly two years, in our face. Second thing, the shipping container, between being rusty and sitting there as a total eyesore, I bring my guests, and they have to see a huge, huge shipping container that takes up the entire front yard. I understand they have valuables or parts, something important in there. So, if they have something important in there, it kind of means they're going to keep it there until the new house is built because supposedly the stuff that's inside there doesn't fit in the house. They are living in the small cottage. So, instead of doing what everyone else would do who moves into a smaller house from a larger house, which is sell the stuff, get rid of it, or go to a storage facility and pay monthly, they figure, what the hell? Throw it in the front of the lawn in a shipping container that's rusting for two years. That violates the law, and no one has done anything about it. But it gets better. This is a picture I took at about 10:00 this morning. You can see the shipping container. So, what do you guys see next to the shipping container? This has to be seen, I'm sorry. What do you see?
They look like a bunch of dandelions.
And strangely enough...
What are they?
Those dandelions and the grass is in excess of eight inches. I measured it. And in fact, it's over 12 inches. Now, why would I bring that up? Because it's illegal. You can't have that. The law is eight inches or less, and you're fined. There are times I feel sick, I don't feel well, and I still mow my lawn. This is, unfortunately, I could say, you know, you're being too strict, you're being too, you're not giving them enough slack. There's been a lot of rain, and grass is growing very fast, and so are weeds. But there is a problem here. You see, over the summer, no one mowed for two months. I felt like I was living next to a Babylon zombie house. Not a good feeling. Two months, and somehow word got back to someone that we were upset, and eventually it was cut. But basically, a good part of last summer was weeds even higher than the pictures I've taken, with no attempt to maintain the property whatsoever. You could have dead bodies and buffaloes in there, and you have grass that's over a foot and a half high last year? I'm sorry. And it's already over 12 inches. And it's early. I mean, it's early. This is early in the season. So, I'm not, I have never spoken against a neighbor in my life, ever. I spoke in favor of people. I spoke in favor of the old deli. But this is ridiculous. If you approve this building, it's going to be Babylon Wheel of Fortune. Spin the wheel, maybe they'll obey the law, maybe they won't, maybe they'll agree to some things, and then they'll flip it to a new buyer who'll turn it into multi-unit housing illegally. And my problem is, they've only been there two years, and they have caused an absolute zombie house kind of atmosphere in the community. What the heck is going to happen if they build a new house? You can't trust them. It's wonderful to make decisions, but if you can't trust the person, there's the old story, a few years ago in Nassau County, where a buyer was told, this is a beautiful piece of Great Gatsby history and Great Neck. It's a very old house, please leave it as is. If you read Newsday, the thing was torn down in a night. And I think a helicopter caught the sight of the house being demolished. And the owner said, oh, I'm sorry. And he demolished the house, and he paid his $500 fine. Please don't...
You really have to, hold on, we hear you. You've made your point very clearly, as you always do. Are you still doing the radio stuff?
No.
Why not?
I have retired.
You're getting, you're too young to retire.
[laughing]
But in all seriousness, we appreciate your concerns and the conditions that you've had. We really need you to, and we've made that clear, and this will be brought to the attention of code enforcement and others immediately.
I actually did call code enforcement to see, not to make a complaint. I don't make complaints about neighbors.
No, we understand.
I really have never done that. I called code enforcement to, A, see if they'd ever made the proper request for a pod, which they hadn't.
Okay, that's...
And I called to find out, you know, some other basic things. There's only one other thing that's scary, and I'm just going to have to mention it, besides the basement, which no one said anything about. They were absolutely set on having a basement in an area that floods all the time. I could just see the Babylon Fire Department going there regularly for flooding, but there was a bigger problem. I was told that there was something about, and I could be totally wrong, that there was a hope of having a yoga studio there.
I will give this to you so you have it. These are all the terms and conditions that you've heard, the attorney for her client, that they have agreed to. And as I asked those questions regarding the owner occupied, single-family, no accessory apartments, they cannot violate that. And if they do, then they will be subject to severe penalties.
But I think that the reason I'm so upset, especially this morning when I saw the zombie-like weeds growing, I hadn't even noticed that, is that they, people do get away with breaking the law all the time in my neighborhood. It happens constantly. And no, I would have thought, by the way, I've, I told you, I naively thought that people would pass by and see the huge shipping container, that it was on the lawn, and Babylon would do the right thing, and immediately crack down. It's like having people selling crack on the street you think they'd notice, but they didn't.
Well, frankly, yeah, often, unless neighbors, it's been there long over time.
Let me just, I'm just going to give this to you.
So, if you want to give us those photos, they will also become part of the record.
And that's, this was taken about 10 o'clock.
That's fine. Okay. Anything else you'd like to bring to our attention?
No, I think that April might want to add something. She's across the street, too.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Just she has some photos that I have, so...
Hold on, come on. Did you fill out a form?
Yeah, I have.
Okay, good, we have it, okay.
Yeah, hi.
Please state your name and address for the...
April Casano, 204 Sheffield. I live directly across the street.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
So, my issue is the parking situation. They're going to build this house on this piece of property that, I have pictures, I could show you what I moved into, and now I'm going to be living as if I'm in Queens. I don't want the parking situation. It's a four-bedroom, two and a half-bath home with a request for a basement that was approved. They did a sea level test?
Excuse me, Matthew, was the basement approved?
Okay, it's approved, yeah.
Pardon me?
Basement's proposed, but not been approved.
Because they were supposed to do a new sea level test last February? They were told they have to do a new sea level test?
Oh, they have to do, they do wells, they do tests to check the water table.
Okay.
Check the water.
So, I can show you what I've been looking at for the past two years.
Just cross the map and I'll be...
Yes, yes, thank you. I'd like to know where that container's going to go during this production of the new building.
We're about to find out.
I've been looking at it for two years.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry that's been the situation you had to deal with.
And I'd like to know what the real, you know, means of this home is going to be.
That is out of, we don't get it. Our job here is to look at the site plan and see how, see if it fits or doesn't.
Notice what's parked behind one, notice what's parked behind the container.
This is your house?
No.
Oh, it's a beautiful house. Which house is this?
That's going to be what's going to be there.
Oh.
I'd rather look at the woods. I don't want to live in Queens.
Oh, okay.
I want to live on Long Island.
I appreciate that. All right, got you. Anything else?
Okay.
I mean, I still don't understand why cars have been parked on the...
Hold on, hold, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We're here. We have, we have all of that information. It's part of the letter that was sent by your neighbors as well, so we'll be following up on all of that.
Okay.
Okay?
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Counsel, would you like to come back?
Sure.
You've heard the concerns of the neighbors?
Yes.
You have verified what the owners have agreed to?
Yes.
These are covenants and restrictions? They go with the deed?
Correct. They run with the land, yes.
So, it must be owner occupied, must be single-family, and there can be no accessory apartments?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else? Dan?
So, they're planning on selling both if it's approved? Planning on selling both now?
If it was approved, it would be, yeah, right, it would be, they would be sold and owner occupied.
If it's approved, how quickly do they plan on building the other house?
I believe, I know the health department application is pending, so it's really a matter of how long it takes to pull building permits from that point. But the idea would be to get a shovel in the ground, you know, while the weather, before the ground freezes for winter, meaning winter in, you know, '24, '25.
And then, I believe you said that there was no one presently living in the space?
In the existing home.
Yeah.
No, I believe there, I believe one of the owners, is it Michael that's in there? Michael Nomicos.
He's a tenant.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Julianne?
I do want to just clarify the occupancy. So, that's a rental right now? It's not owner occupied?
My understanding was that Michael Nomicos lives there. I'll call my client tonight when I talk to him about the trailer that's there and find out exactly. But when I did the hearing back in February, that's what I was told, and I wasn't told of a change. There's two owners, Timothy Porter and Michael Nomicos.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Can applicant describe the test form that was conducted, as well as the basement?
Can I describe it? So, it was done by Long Island Soil Testing, Inc. It's on the survey, and it looks like water in pale brown fine was, coarse sand was found at between 14 and 22 feet. It's on the survey, yeah.
And the top of the slab of the basement is deep, correct?
The top of the slab of the basement? I know it's an unfinished cellar, it's just for mechanicals.
Six foot?
Six foot?
Six foot from grade?
Six foot from grade. Far below that, yes.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Do you, do you know what's in the trailer?
Apparently, it's being used for storage, but I will be making a phone call when I leave.
Okay. Do you have any problem with bringing the property into compliance?
No, not, I mean...
...to contemplate the site plan?
They won't get approvals if they don't bring it into compliance, right? So, yeah, they need to bring it into compliance. That's understood.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Matt, where are we with departmental agreements?
We do have some minor revisions needed in planning still, so my staff will recognize our standard procedure of closing the public hearing, reserve a decision, and setting the record.
Okay, so we did a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Dan, second by Frank.
Second.
So, the public hearing is now closed. The decision is being reserved in order for us to review the feedback that we've received this evening and any open site plan issues. The record will remain open for additional written comments. To follow up on the status of the application or submit additional written comments, you can contact the planning department at either of the following methods. In person, the planning is located on the west wing of Town Hall. Applications, documents, and plans are available for inspection between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., via phone (631) 957-3103, or via email at planningdepartment@...